Answering that question. And also, I do believe that Dr. Lusa has done a good job. It has fulfilled his obligations. So I agree with Mr. Hoffman. And I would like to make a motion to approve 5% salary increase for superintendent retroactive to July 1st, 2014.
Okay. I have a motion on the floor. Colley? Uh, second. Second, Mr. Hoffman.
Yes.
So move. So second and discussion board. Say none. Call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those against? Say none. So five zero. Next item, please. This would be item number five, which is five, 5% salary increase for assistant superintendents, superintendent of business services, retroactive people I want for this year. Okay. Any questions, Board? Or, there you go.
Can I just ask a question?
Yeah, you can ask another question. Thank you.
Okay. I'm not a professional accountant, but I do have a quick question. Everything goes retroactive to July, okay? Teacher salaries, we're done with this whole year. So our salary cuts off, and it was last year, right? So then, shouldn't the increases go into effect for the new school year? Okay, but then they're going retroactive to July. We don't get our first paycheck till the end of September. So I don't know how that works.
Yeah. Can you answer that?
I don't, I just, can you explain that for me? Because technically, to me, in my brain, it sounds like they're getting money paid 5% increase on last year's budget.
No. Actually, the budget starts one July, and it goes through June 30th. So the, all 12-month employees were recommended and have, the ones voted on have been approved for increases effective to the first day of the current fiscal year. And that's how we budget, and that's what we've done in the AB 1200, is we've shown that we can afford it for the whole year. Now, many, many teachers are 10-month employees, 10 and a half-month employees, and so, as I commented earlier with the AB 1200, we kept the summer school teachers who worked in June and part of July at last year's rate because that's how that was funded in that budget year, and that's how summer school was funded.
Even when they worked in July?
Even though they worked in June.
No, I remember that time.
Two and a half weeks of July.
I was, I was just confused with how the budget worked on that. Because when the teachers negotiate the increase, it's sort of, we negotiate for everyone because it goes all the way across the board. So we can never get more than what everyone else gets. Because it drags everyone else across, and it sort of levels the playing field. Because when we get our increase, it's going to not just affect the amount of salary that the teachers get, but it's going to suck money out of the budget for every other category. So, it's sort of like, we're doing the negoti-- I don't know, I just felt a little weird that we negotiated for everyone the 5%. That's all. That was just--
So noted.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for doing that.
I didn't understand.
Well, we don't say that we have any me-too clauses, but we try and take into account other bargaining units whenever we hit the table. And usually, if you do a lovely job, CSE likes it. But we have presented different things at different times.
Let me get back to our motion. Second, second. First, motion. Got a second? Full noted? Okay. I need a motion and a second.
Number five. Move approval 5% salary increase for assistant superintendent of business services, retroactive to July 1st.
Yes. Is there a second?
Second.
So second, Mr. Hoffman.
It's educational services and assistant superintendent of business services.
So we're gonna do the business services. One or two. Second. Mr. Hoffman, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any ayes? Say none. Five zero. Next one. Number six is the assistant superintendent of educational services, retroactive July 1st of this year, a 5% salary increase. Okay? What?
Acceptance.
I accept the motion?
Second.
Mr. Kim? Mr. Kim made motion. Ms. Barnes made second. Any discussion? Say none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any ayes? Say none. Five zero. Okay. Going to information section, and I need, if the board members have any questions, please raise, bring them to my attention. Yes. Ms. Ila Huerta will give us the 2014-15 Title I information. This is very critical for us to understand because a lot of people think it's just more money. It's categorical, if I'm, if I'm anxious. Categorical, it's directed, and at the same time, it is used in a very wise way by this decision. Ms. Huerta?
Thank you. Thank you. Hello. Good evening, President Garcia, Dr. Lusa, superintendent, cabinet members, and audience. My name is Ila Huerta, and yesterday I'm gonna be giving you information on the Title I for our district, Salinas City. So what, uh, now I get to control this. What is Title I? So, Title I is a federal grant which provides federal funding to schools under the no child left behind act. Funded is based on the number of students of economically disadvantaged homes. And Title I is intended to supplement, not to supplant. What is the purpose of Title I? To help students achieve proficiency on state academic standards in language arts and mathematics, and also to increase student performance in high-quality schools through school-wide reforms, also to build teacher capacity on scientifically researched professional development, and to enhance parents' ability to help their children succeed through quality parental involvement activities. So, how do we identify a school as a Title I? Schools with at least 40% low-income students may be designated as school-wide Title I program or targeted assistance, which means the money will follow those students. Salinas City has established a 75% as a threshold to designate schools as Title I. All Title I schools in Salinas School, uh, Salinas City are all school-wide programs.
You have a question, Ms. Hoffman?
Yes. I was, I was curious about the 75%. How long have, have that standard been in effect?
I think maybe Dr. Lusa might be able to help us with the 75%. How long has that been?
75%, eh, that was 12 years ago, 12, 14 years ago, before the父母 survey that appeared.
Right. Yeah. I didn't recall it. And I, as a board member, I think that's way too high. I think we have enough poverty's people in all of our schools that they need help. And I, for one, as a board member, would like to see this lower. And I don't know how the rest of the board feels about it, but I think we should have that discussion and, well, hopefully lower it.
Yeah, that's the process. Exactly. There's the process. Yeah, maybe the information, yeah, but there is a process at schools that we decide, you guys decide.
Right. I know.
Okay.
But that, that's a future discussion.
Okay.
Yes. Let's listen to the presentation and have you in there after.
Okay. So, that would be a school-wide Title I program. Well, first of all, the district informs the schools once they qualify, and then the individual schools will make that decision to become Title I. They have to send a parent survey to the parents, to all-state holders, and the school side council needs to decide if we get responses over 65, 70%, whatever the, they decide, they're gonna decide whether they wanna become a Title I school or not. But then, once the school establishes a school planning team, the, some of the members, principal, teachers, school side council, district representatives, or an external provider, community members, they all need to serve in that team. Also, the team conducts a comprehensive needs assessment. The team develops a comprehensive plan, and then the plan is approved by their school side council and then by the local board of education. And so, conducting the comprehensive needs assessment, it's a year-long process. The assessment includes data analysis, because it reveals the priority areas in which Title I programs will focus, and also it is based on academic information about all the students, not just one.
When you say all students, all students at the school or all students that are close to you?
The all students at the school site.
Okay. Good point.
So creating the comprehensive plan, again, collecting and analyzing the data, writing the plan, because it provides a blueprint for all core operations in the school-wide program. It will bring focus and a coherence, and a coherence to activities. It will ensure unity of a purpose, alignment, and clear accountability. That's really important. It must, and it must address all nine components, which I'm gonna be explaining right now what they, what they are. So this is the nine, the nine components for a successful school-wide program. The school-wide reform strategy is based on scientifically researched programs. Instruction needs to be by highly qualified teachers. High-quality and ongoing professional development for the teachers and for all staff. Strategies to attract highly qualified teachers that need to teach at this demanding schools. And strategies to increase parental involvement. Number five, and then number six, plan for assisting preschool students in a successful transition to enter elementary programs. Number seven, to include teachers in decisions regarding the use of academic assessments. Number eight, activities for students who are experiencing difficulty attaining proficiency. And the last one is coordination and integration of federal and state services and programs into the school. So planning and implementing the annual evaluation review, the school must evaluate annually and analyze their outcomes and implementation.
Excuse me, I have a question.
Sure.
With the examine and evaluate, they report to the board, correct? Through administration?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
How does the Title I encourage the homeschool partnership? So the school must develop parental, parental involvement policy, a Title I parent annual meeting presented by the, by the principal, and a parent survey is conducted each parent to get the parent's input. So the parent's involvement policy, each school has a parent's involvement policy with parent's input. The policy basically outlines how parents can take part in the school's effort, how they are gonna be involved. And then the school, um, school contract is written, it's an agreement between the entire staff. Students will also share the responsibility for improve, um, for them to improve, and it outlines how the school and parents will build a partnership to help the students achieve high standards. So identification for program improvement. A title school will be identified for program improvement when, for each two consecutive years, the Title I does not make the annual yearly progress in language, English language charts or mathematics, and/or in any numerically significant group. So what does the school do once it is identified for school improvement? Within three months, the school must develop or advise a two-year plan to improve the school within the input, the staff, parents, and the outside experts, and the, and the plan must address how the school will improve academic achievement, how they're gonna involve parents, they need to put 10% of its Title I's for professional development, and they need to notify parents of the program improvement status, and incorporate activities outside the regular school day, like actual programs or Saturday academies. So this is a very important chart. I don't think we have that, and I left it up in my bag over here.
Thank you.
So the no child left behind program includes your school requirements. If you, of course, the first two years, if you don't make it, if the school don't make it, they go into program improvement, so that's considered year one. So it provides, second, wait, this, so year one, right here. The local educational agency, which is the district, provides technical assistance to the program improvement school. We have to notify the parents, um, and the program improvement status, and then the parents have the right to choose another school that's not a title, that's not a program improvement school. And then the district needs to set aside 5% for professional development to meet the high-quality staff requirements, provides a choice to attend another school, another public school for students who the parents wish, who wish students, and establishes a peer review process to review or revise school plan. At the school level, revises school plan within three months to cover the two-year period, uses 10% of their Title I funds for professional development, and implements plan promptly. So that's year one. So once in year two, the district or the LEA continues to support, sends parent notifications, again, provides professional development, and offers school choice for those parents that wish to have their kids attend a month of, not program improvement. And then we, once they get into year two, we have to offer those supplemental educational programs, the services, we have to contract with outside tutors, like you just ordered for those. And then the school continues, you know, to plan and implement and offer professional development. Now, when they get into year three, that's the corrective action. So again, the district continues to offer assistance, we continue to notify the parents, offer supplemental educational service, school choice, professional development, kids again have, the parents wish, they continue to remove their kids from that program improvement school and send them to another school, and so that continuation continues. So you can reveal that, but this is the really critical year, I think, year four, because here is when we have to prepare a plan for an alternative governance of school. So the district must choose or select one of the following: reopen school as a charter school, replace all or most staff, including principal, contract with an outside entity to maintain school, have the state take over, or any other major restructuring. And this is what the district has always, what the, what the schools have always selected, any other major restructuring, we bring professional development, new programs, but we've never chosen to do any of the, the above mentioned, okay? And I'll go more into it into the next slide, but it's the same thing as year five, a little bit more marsh. Okay? So I'll go on to the next slide because it, I'll explain it right here. So what happens if the school failed to make AYP, and for consecutive years, the school is designated for corrective actions, and again, like I said, the, they won't select, the district can't select any of this, replace school staff, roll into the failure to make AYP, fully implement a new curriculum with professional development, significantly district management authority at the school level, appoint an outside expert to advise, extend the school year, or the school day. That's first. Year four. Question?
Any questions for the board? Board members?
I have one.
Yes. Mr. Hoffman, and then Ms. Barnes. In our packet, it says use 10% of the Title I funds for professional development.
That's correct. That's at the school.
It says five.
That, um--
Is this ours, or?
Not the LEA? The LEA, which is the district?
Yes.
Because we also receive parental involvement funds, so we have to put 5%. At the, at the sites, it's 10% for professional development. So the sites receive their title funds, Title I funds, and they have to put 10% aside for professional development. At the district level, we put 5%.
Only five. I got it.
Ms. Barnes?
Yes, I have a question, too. Under the identification for program improvement, what if a school, say, we lowered the threshold from 70 to 40? What if a school qualifies for that, but they don't qualify for the progress section? Will they, will they be able to become Title I if they chose to?
They have to go, they chose, they have, they choose to be a Title I school, they have to go through the whole, the whole entire process. And again, all these requirements, but once they, if they decide, they vote that they do want to become a Title I school, they have to follow the, the requirements of Title I. So hopefully, they don't, for example, right now, Monterey Park just became a Title I school, but they're still not a program improvement school because they're not in year one yet. So hopefully, they won't. So they don't have to follow the, they don't have to follow the, all these requirements. But after two years, consecutive years, that they don't make the, the requirement, then they, they could go into program improvement. Okay, so, oh, question?
Also, just one more thing. When we get public comment, if there's a principal here that has been in a Title I school and a non-Title I school, it'd be interesting to hear their perspective of boots on the ground of what the difference was.
I think we might have--
Questions? Questions from board members? Any other question?
Yes.
Say none?
She has a question.
Direct a question to, to the presenter, and we'll listen to the answer.
So there's no AYP now, so what are they doing for that?
This year, there is no Y, no AYP. You're absolutely correct, but we based it on last, if I'm correct, if somebody can help me with that, to, from, yeah, because they gave us an average, correct? So yes, there's still an AYP, but they took the average of the last two or three, three years, of the last three years.
For API.
For API, now, for API.
There's no AYP?
No AYP.
They just--
We haven't-- We haven't heard.
That's a set vote.
Okay. Barbara?
Okay, next question, please. Thank you. You can, you can choose to go into program improvement. Can you go, or to go into Title I, to become a Title I, can you choose to go out?
Once you're, I guess if you, if you meet the requirements, and you're selected to go into Title I school, you have to follow the, the protocols or the requirements, and then if you wanna get out, I'm not sure what that, if there's, like, say, you wanna go, I mean, it's a lot of work, I think. Why would you wanna get out if you're gonna receive a site, and if it's needed, right?
Well, I, I mean, I wouldn't think so, but I could see that possibly a school that could end up because of the original AYP expectations of reaching 100% proficiency, that, that idea was that every school would end up in program improvement at some point because we all kind of know 100% proficiency isn't gonna happen. So if you reach that threshold when you're like, oh, we're not gonna meet it, but we're getting Title I funds, but now we're gonna be under program improvement, is there a way to get out? Because--
That's a really good question. I'm not sure. Or Dr. Lusa, do you know the answer?
Yeah. I don't think so, because every district who has been, choose, maybe, chosen to, yeah, I went out of Title I.
Yeah.
I don't wanna throw, with all these penalties, to replace.
But because I'm sure--
But if it Title I, does comply with the federal requirements, there's no need to go to program improvement. But since the federal requirements are so--
Hi.
No real, in real. Everyone's becoming program improvement right now, and the state is silent right now. We're like, frozen. And we're year, I think, we're year seven, we're going into year eight, and the state is silent because they don't know what to do with us. We're program improvement, not even. Anyway, waiting for the new legislation, and then China, maybe China's gonna change hopefully.
Jennifer?
Well, I was just gonna say that Dr. Lusa referred to the year when Cameron had to make the decision about whether or not to take Title I, and it really was a nebulous ground where it wasn't clear what the punishments would be if they didn't make AYP or API. And, and Cameron was fortunate that they would have one or two years of at-risk and then get out of it. We had a great test search that we'd be holding steady, and we managed to stay behind the curve where so many schools in California have been at risk. That, as a school that is not Title I, looking at the district, I mean, we do much of the things that are on that side already. When you are teaching principals at nine of your 12 schools how to write a school plan, we write our plan very similarly. We analyze the data, we're setting our goals, we're trying to have benchmarks in place. So that's happening anyway. The Title I parent involvement plan, we didn't have to write a separate plan and have a separate meeting, but it, it's something that's manageable, and I think our teachers would be fine with that. So coming from a Title I school that had strict responsibilities, the money kind of makes it worthwhile. Because when you say you must spend 10%, if you don't make program improvement goals, you must spend 10% on staff development, my teachers are dying to spend the money on staff development and go to conferences and get more training. When you say that you have to spend money on the after-school SES tutoring, yes, that's a set aside, but if we see children with a need, we want it. But we do understand that it will impact other schools. So if it's a phase-in process, it gives the teachers more time to be aware of what those requirements are. We're kind of holding steady with the fact that we think we can meet the program improvement goals and/or stay at least far enough behind some of the other schools in year seven that we won't be as noticeable for a while. Sort of my opinion.
So I think--
Thank you.
So I can continue, pretty much, you know, what happens, you know, if five, if you don't meet AYP for five consecutive years, so after one year, the corrective action and the fail of making AYP, then we move to the restructuring. The district must prepare a plan, and then the new governance must be in place, although you're the one year after being identified for restructuring, and then, sort of, I mean, again, what happens, and we've already kind of said that, so. So what the business department did for us right here, they, this, this is a Title I school, the ones, we're on the metals, we have low income, 89.16%, El Gablan, 86.81%, Cameron, 82.22%, Lowerwood, 65.45%, Lincoln, 39.53%, Loma Vista, 90.49%, Los Padres, 91.99%, Mission Park, 48.09%, Monterey Park, 75.48%, what, Tivida? Monterey, 75.48%. Nativida, 93.13%, Roosevelt, 96.27%, Sherwood, 96.8, and University Park, 75.33. So this is a Title I funding right now for each site. And then this is what they get for parent involvement at their, at their site. And this is proposed site funding, if we were to add University Park for next school year. So, of course, the Title I funds decreases. Also, the parent involvement, as you can see. Let you, can I look at that? So questions on that? Okay, so then if I present you the next slide, we're to add, now, University Park and Lowerwood because, you know, they're, Lowerwood is, right here, 65.45%, and University Park is 75.33%, so the proposed funding, again, of course, it decreases. You can add in schools, and it's up to you. Then, I proceed to the other slide, we're to add Lowerwood, excuse me, University Park, Lowerwood, and Mission Park. So, Mission Park, it's 48.9% of low socioeconomic, and this is how much we raise it yet, and under parent involvement.
Ms. Barnes, and then Mr. Kim, please.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Get two questions.
Yes. The question is, so we get X amount of money no matter what?
Right.
And that money, if we add more schools, you have to spread it out, or you attribute it?
How do we decide who's gonna get what proportion of the money?
How do they decide? It's based on their, it's based on a formula, based on their low income, number of students that qualify for--
So the difference between Sherwood and Roosevelt being like 40, some odd thousand, $50,000 is because there's--
There's a--
Higher Harvard.
High poverty numbers.
No, it's, well, it's the number of students--
Students, number of students.
There's an allotment per student in Title I, it's made. So Sherwood has a larger allotment, Roosevelt has less, so they--
Thank you.
Thank you.
It'll be added in schools, and it's up to you. Then I have the other slide, we're to add Laurelwood, excuse me, University Park, Laurelwood, Mission Park. So Mission Park, it's 48.9% of low socioeconomic, and this is how much we basically get under parent involvement.
Ms. Barnes and then Mr. Kemp.
Oh, sorry.
Got two questions.
Yes, the question is, so we get X amount of money no matter what?
Right.
And that money, if we add more schools, you have to spread it out or you attribute it.
How do we decide who's going to get what proportion of that money?
How do they decide? It's based on their, it's based on a formula, based on their low income, number of students that qualify for-
So the difference between Sherwood and Roosevelt being like 40, some odd thousand, $50,000 is because there's-
Sizers.
Higher poverty.
High poverty.
No, it's, well, it's the number of students. There's an allotment per student in Title I this year, so Sherwood has a larger, Roosevelt has less, so they're just-
Thank you. Okay. So if we were to add all, you know, all sites, including Lincoln, right here, which is very close to becoming, you know, 40%, so this is our allotment and their parent involvement.
And the federal government allows for 35% to be, basically, you can count, you know, in that range from 35% to count as a school-wide. So that's an exception the federal government allows for. We have, we have a daily standard that's up to 75%, but the federal government alone application makes it, so if you have 35%, you can be considered a school-wide. So, you know, you very easily could say every school in this district meets that 40% threshold, and every, you know, the poverty is affected in every single school, and it affects hundreds of kids in every single school.
Okay, any questions?
Any more questions from board? Ms. Barnes?
How do we get them to give us more money? I mean, if more, you know, more kids are qualified, why can't, why can't we get more money?
I know, I think it's based on the number of students.
Ms. Quarta?
One of the things that comes to my mind, and we keep reading and we keep talking about student achievement.
Right.
And student achievement is applied to every child from day one, with or without Title I, with or without Title I. That is our charge, and yet we have children that are still behind schedule. And with Common Core, I think we have more of a, we have to be more not only focused on instruction and promotion, but at the same time, the children are coming along together down the road. And my question basically comes from, how can the district afford a failure?
They can't.
We cannot afford it, no matter what dollar you put onto it. But if we have people demanding what they want, then we're not going to get very far. It's what we have to really support is the faculty, the staff, and everybody here who's paying attention to the child every day, instead of coming in and saying, this is what they need. Because the experts are in the school site. Do you agree with that or not? The experts are within the school site and the district level, which is supporting the school.
Any other public comment before I close it?
No, actually, I have some questions, but I would like to comment about the whole things as well. One question I have-
Why, she's finished.
Well, basically, but this is just a quick notion, don't forget, the purpose of Title I is to ensure that often it's a fair, equal, and significant opportunity to have high academic achievement. It's like, you know, it's challenging within the state academic standards and assessments, and just there are many ways of going forward, but only one way of standing still.
That's just, yes. Any other questions, board? Say none, okay. Public comment? I can accept a public comment right now.
Okay.
We're going to time that as well. Thank you very much, Ms. Quarta.
Thank you.
For your information and also your department pulling it together.
Sean Henry, one of the questions I was going to ask is, and that actually goes to what you were saying, the application for Title I's is $2 million. So what we got presented was a $1 million. The reason why I sat with Ms. Zando is because I thought she might answer a question, she did, and she gave me some information. There's a whole nother million dollars that's being held back for probably the SES funds and transportation. So there's a whole other million dollars that's part of the application. So the program improvement schools are giving up another million dollars. So it's $2 million grant, and that's part of this. So that was the original question I had. I do want to thank Ms. Barnes for coming and giving, giving me a copy of the chart of where the money was, because that was very, very helpful, and I think that was, you know, very, I think it really shows. I actually asked Ms. Zando, hey, on Friday morning, if you were afforded, in this case, $56,000, would that help the students in Mission Park? She said, absolutely. I'm pretty sure for Laurelwood it would be the same and for other schools, because the numbers are there. In terms of, one of the answers that was given by Mr., Dr. Lusa before, Carmel actually gets, and I have some forms here for the board too, if you want to hand them out here, Carmel, Carmel's schools actually take Title I funds. And actually, one of the schools, Tralacitos, has, has been taking it, I looked back 10 years ago, and they had Title I funds for 55 students, for 14.5%. So Carmel, who, the last number that I have compared to our district, is a basic aid district, has $17,000. They collect Title I for 50 to 60 kids. Now, the five schools, Laurelwood and the four Area Four schools are a third of the population. We have 1,800 kids that have not been getting any funds for those schools that affect poverty in the classroom. And so the 75% has been an exclusion to 1,800 students in our district, and there's not much of a justification. It really should be provided, because if you're a teacher at Laurelwood and you have 65% poverty, that means the majority of your kids, if you have 30 kids in the class, you probably have 18, 19 kids that are affected by poverty. The exact reason why Title I funds were established. That's why 40% is for school-wide, and low-poverty schools are 25%. You can even get Title I funds for less than 25%. And Carmel collects the money. So whatever, you know, they're not doing bad in the financial department, but they collect Title I's for their poor kids. So I think it's something that should be really looked at, and I agree with Mr. Hoffman, that thresholds should be dropped down, provided to all the students, because what was shown was only half of the grant. The other path is going to all the tutoring programs, and those are going to all the PI schools. So let all of our students have an opportunity to have extra resources to meet the needs at their school, because the experts are the teachers, are the staff members that are close. You are experts, but you don't have all the answers. You need to trust your staff more.
Thank you very much. We're going to go on to the next item.
Before we go, I'd like to make a comment. Yes. Here, when the district received Title I like 20 years ago, the threshold was 85, because the direction from the state where you need to concentrate the money to make an impact in fewer schools, fewer, fewer schools. So after a couple of years, so that was 95, after a couple of years, the board could actually say, well, let's include a couple of schools, and we lower it to 85. And like 12 years ago, like 12 years ago, the board lowered the level to 75. So this presentation is for your information, basically is a board decision how the district is going to operate. Now, I mean, 20 years ago, we didn't have maybe three, four students Title I in some sites. Now it's over, over 40% in every school site. So this is information for you to analyze, and A, we're here to follow the board directions.
Dr. Lusa, what would it take then? Do we need to agendize this as an information item to figure out if we could reduce that from 75 to 40, or should it be an action item? What should we do?
Well, this is information, we can bring the item for next board meeting for action. Basically, what you're doing, you're changing policy, which is your right, instead of expecting 75% of low income, say 60 or 50, it's your pleasure. The state is clear, 40%, I think that's the minimum that the state is required.
So you can bring it back to us with some options or recommendations?
At your pleasure. At your pleasure. You can bring the item for action to change the policy with options, so you can decide to discuss or postpone the discussion or continue the discussion at your pleasure. Are you directing to bring options next meeting?
Not me. No, no. I am not able to meet here. So, I mean, I assume have it the next meeting or later.
With the pleasure, Vice President.
Well, then, we need to make it so that Mr. Hoffman is here.
We can still bring, we can still analyze and wait for Mr. Hoffman to discuss and to have a final decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So now, Kemp? Kemp, you got a question?
Well, I do have one question, I mean, just a clarification.
Good.
If we lower this percentage rate and include more schools, then we're going to have to spread the money throughout the different schools, right? So then, the schools that are receiving the money now are going to receive less money. And if they're in corrective action already, then that may hinder the other.
Can I, I mean, what about the QIA schools also? They lose their funding this year, don't they? This is their last year.
Right.
So they would be drastically affected, actually.
I'm going to go on to the next item. We have one more item. With the pleasure of having National Steinbeck Center representative here, or two.
CSU of B. Is that the president? Oh, it's gay, first time I've seen him, oh, second time I've seen him, of course.
Mr. Schran, go ahead and do the introduction.
Thank you. Good evening. It's my pleasure to discuss for information tonight the National Steinbeck Center request for tax forgiveness. And first, I'd like to introduce Ms. Colleen Bailey, who's the executive director of National Steinbeck Center. Thank you, Colleen. And then I would, I'd like to say a couple of things. First of all, there's been a fair amount of press about this, and you might have read the Herald, you might have seen it in the Californian, and there seems to be this notion that if there's tax forgiveness, there's dollar loss. And that may be partially true, but it's mostly false for the agencies involved in this. After doing a fair amount of study and consulting our RDA expert lawyers from Delanca Group, who negotiated for us to get the RDA funds that we were owed and weren't going to get, the truth is that the amount of money we get called the revenue limit is composed of local taxation, and the state matches the rest, the balance, to get to that total. And in this particular case, if we were to say, no, we don't want to forgive this debt, which in our particular case, as you see here, is $125,397, we would then get that money, and that would be part of our local tax revenue, and that would be subtracted from the total we were due, and the state would match the balance. So we would get X number of dollars. If we said, yes, we would forgive this, this debt, this potential debt to Salinas City Elementary School District, we would then report lower local tax revenues, and the state then would match more money, so the total would not change. Hence, in my discussion to you, it's, it's revenue neutral for our district. So if it's revenue due neutral, the question then becomes, is it better to take that little money and let Steinbeck dangle out there and survive or not? And I'm sure they have a plan, being a Plan C. Or is it better to endorse the Steinbeck Center being sold to Cal State Monterey Bay and to bring a presence of a university, a four-year university into the city of Salinas? So tonight, it's for information. If you look at the table I provided you, we're, we're the elephant in that swimming pool. 125K is the highest amount that would be forgiven. Now, every LEA, which would include MCOE, the high school district, and Hartnell, would be revenue neutral. I'm not sure the county situation. The state, the city came with us and actually supported this when they presented this to us two weeks ago. And then there's another $20,483 of some small organizations, the Monterey County Water Resources Agency, district, Zone Seven, Salinas Valley Memorial Hospital, God knows they need more money, huh? Mosquito abatement, all together, that's about 20 grand. So my intent would be to come back to you for action at our next board meeting and with a recommendation to move forward with it. But again, there's been a lot of misinformation in the paper, where it was, oh my God, LEAs are going to lose money. How can we afford to lose 125,000? How can the high school district afford to lose X number of dollars? And with that, I would entertain your questions, but I think the expert might be Colleen. And Colleen, the gentleman with you, I'm sorry, I didn't know him either. Sir?
I'm the Lord of Show, I'm the president of CSU of B.
Thank you very much. Welcome to our board meeting tonight. So he's going to write the check for 3 million, but they won't go 3,490,000, because I asked Colleen that two weeks ago.
Thank you very much for being here. Thank you so much for having me, and it is a pleasure to be here tonight. I think this is an extraordinary moment for the education community and for the community at large here in Salinas. After many years of financial struggles, the National Steinbeck Center, I think, finally has an answer that will not only solve its problems, but solve a lot of issues here in Salinas. And this is going to be an incredible partnership between the National Steinbeck Center and CSU of B down at One Main Street in Salinas. The economic benefits to downtown Salinas, the sustainability of the National Steinbeck Center as an organization and a resource to all of the schools, and most importantly, the enhanced educational opportunities for the students of Monterey County, and I think are really unbelievable. This is sort of a unique and wonderful opportunity. The National Steinbeck Center provides over $100,000 a year in direct benefit to the schools here in Salinas. We do tours at the National Steinbeck Center for free for students, we have writing camps, we do the Steinbeck Young Authors Program, which is a writing school program, an innovative writing school program that reaches 5,000 students in Monterey County. That program has been expanded this year through a partnership with the Monterey Bay Aquarium. It is a science-literature-based program at the high school level, that is a really innovative program that is directly meeting the requirements of Common Core. We have a performing arts series that we provide out at Sherwood Hall and the National Steinbeck Center with free performing arts programs for our students here in the Salinas Valley. We have a program coming up in October called East-West, which is really directly talking about violence here in Salinas and how we can answer those problems. We have lots of public programs, all of which are open to the community of students and their families, including, of course, the Steinbeck Birthday Celebration in February, where many of the students that attend Salinas schools perform and come and celebrate with their families, one of the great heroes of the Salinas Valley. We also have our bookstore, we have online resources, we've expanded those online resources to include a Steinbeck app, which is available to everyone for free. We are currently working on the development of a virtual tour of the National Steinbeck Center, so if schools can't afford to bring students because they don't have busing, they can still engage with us through this online presence. We're trying to really be a resource to all of you, to all of the teachers, and to all of the students and their families. All of this will only be enhanced by CSU of B coming in, and so it is my pleasure to introduce the president of CSU of B, Dr. Achoa.
Thank you, Colleen, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to address you. I really can't add a lot to the pretty thorough analysis that Colleen Bailey presented, but I just want to emphasize that for us, it's very important, and we're very excited about coming to Salinas and being able to be a resource for the community, to be closer to the people that we serve, and to offer the programs that a certain segment of the population that finds it difficult to come to our campus because of family and work obligation, will be able to serve those students as well. And we already have a collaboration with the National Steinbeck Center, we have a museum studies program in our campus that works with them. We've put on displays in their gallery, and we expect that collaboration to grow even closer once we are co-located. So everybody look at it, this is a great, a great opportunity for all of us, I think. It's what businesspeople call a win-win-win proposition, so I urge you to support it. Thank you.
I have questions from the board members here. So we'll take one at a time.
Could you describe what the facility will look like? What do you envision it to look like if this goes through?